Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to the Board of Alderman's meeting for Monday, November 4th. First order business is minutes of the previous meeting from October 21st.
Would you approve?
Second.
Are there any changes, corrections? See none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We are outside the rail. Is there anyone to address the board on matters that are not on the agenda? Yes ma'am, if you would step to the podium please and you need to give your name and address for the record.
My name is Savannah Crowther and I live at 30 North Street in Rutland.
Good evening.
Good evening. I prepared about a five to 10 minute speech for you guys. Myself and almost everyone on the bench behind me here are here because of the state-of-state program in Rutland and our recent transplants.
And the state-of-state program?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. There are also many others who stand behind us that couldn't be here in person, from those who have lived here for generations to those newly arrived. I found the support not only in those I've personally talked to, but also through my research that has shown that this is not the first time that traffic safety improvements have been brought up by citizens as I plan to do today. Additionally, there is more than one study already completed to address the problem, such as the Rutland City Pedestrian Assessment Case Study from 2015, that I believe you guys are aware of. We all chose to live in Rutland and there are a lot of great things about Rutland that drew us here, such as affordability, community convenience, and recreation. However, there are some real issues that this community is facing and all of us here today and the ones who aren't genuinely want to help make it a better place. One of the larger issues we see here at the moment is the unaddressed road safety hazards throughout the city that create a detriment for those wanting to live and visit Rutland. The only project I'm aware of at this time to help mitigate this issue is a single crossing improvement project scheduled for two years out on West and Forest Streets. We don't believe this is enough to encourage not only active recruitment to the area, but the safety of the residents already here. We believe that if the community hopes to continue to attract new residents such as ourselves and keep current ones, then increasing access to local shops, parks, dining areas, schools, et cetera, will only benefit the community and the growth it is requiring. Almost every single one of us here this evening has children, most under the age of five. We're frequent users of the streets, both in cars and as pedestrians. We do care deeply about the safety of our families and of our community. Right now, there are areas that we feel unsafe moving about within the city, especially with young children. It does impact our use of the city and the goods and services we are able to access. We believe that if the board wants to see more economic growth, such as through recruiting new residents like myself, and want to prioritize the economic well-being of this community, then the safety of its inhabitants moving around within it and those visiting should be of great concern. According to the Rutland Regional Medical Center on Pedestrian Safety, areas that pose an increased risk of injury or death as a pedestrian are defined as follows: high-traffic areas, areas with a high number of parked vehicles on the street, areas with higher posted speed limits, areas with no divided highways, areas with few pedestrian-controlled devices such as crosswalk signals, locations that lack specific play areas, residential areas, and straight paved dry roads. Many roads, especially Highway 7, meet all of these definitions that put pedestrians at increased risk for injury or death, and I would argue any other users as well. Along Highway 7 alone, there are recreation areas, businesses, homes, multi-use paths, schools. I know I'm not alone when I say I've witnessed, in my very short time here, about six months, numerous occasions of people darting along the highways that bicycled the city and other streets because there are no other options. Going back decades to the death of young Michael Coleman along Highway 7 around 1970, to the death of Carly Farrow seven years ago, to the most recent fatality near Rotary Park on Highway 7 near my house, what changes have been made to increase the safety of those who are active users of Rutland? As members of this community and as mothers who frequent the streets often, we are extremely concerned. We understand not everyone may have children as we do, but we are all children to someone. I have personally sprinted across Highway 7, holding my two-year-old son to go get ice cream at Seward's near our house. This is a feat I will never perform again and it really truly felt death-defying. Because of the difficulty I have in accessing this business, Seward's has one less customer now. This example can be extrapolated out to include areas and other businesses in Rutland. I know that as a new resident, if I'm feeling this way, there are many others who are as well. This is indicated through the vast support we've received and multiple official documents, such as crash reports, guidelines for pedestrian crossing treatments, and the efforts of various city commissions, organizations, and citizens. We're certainly not going to wait around for the next fatality, such as the most recent one on Highway 7, before emphatically expressing our concern over this issue and a lack of action. We hope you don't either. Possible solutions we've thought of include funding an engineering study for tangible improvements to the safety along high-risk corridors, a commission to assess the economic feasibility of increasing public safety and its impacts on the local economy, and reviewing again what various agencies have already released on studies and recommendations for this area. We're here to let you know that we don't just want to present problems, we're here to help and be a part of the solution, and if nothing else, we hope that by having all of us present here today, it shows you we are committed to doing what it takes to create a safer and resilient Rutland. We're here to help, volunteer, plan, organize, and participate in our local democracy and community. We hope the board gives us the opportunity to start the long-term solutions needed for the safety of all residents and visitors here. This in turn will only positively impact the economic vitality and resilience of this place. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions to Alderman Wickham?
I just actually want to thank you for bringing this up to the board. This is something I've been working on through Project Vision to a degree. And quite honestly, if I could get all of your contact information, I would like to reach out and see if we could involve you in part of this.
That would be wonderful.
And I would also like to make a referral to the Community and Economic Development Committee.
Okay. Is there any debate on the motion to refer to Community and Economic Development? Aldrin Humphrey.
Thank you. I was going to do the same, so thank you Matt. Also, I wanted to thank you guys for coming tonight. This is exactly the kind of feedback that is helpful, particularly from residents that we've recently attracted and want to continue to track and keep here, so thank you.
Alderman DePoy.
And I think that the referral to Community and Economic Development is an appropriate one because, as our speaker noted, you have a lot of businesses that are along that area of Route 7 North, North Main Street, that it's just a straight thoroughfare from Crescent Street all the way to Post Road and there are some, you know, the speeds do tend to go above the norm up through there. And there's not much for crosswalks at all over there, so. And I mean, Seward's is a staple of the community, as well as some other businesses that are up there. Heritage Family Credit Union has a branch over on that side of Main Street. There's the Not New Store, I forget the name of it, but it's, you know, used clothing, used furniture, the Goodwill store. So there's a lot of economic development up there that may be losing some of that business traffic because pedestrians aren't able to get across the street up there, so maybe a slowdown zone up there could be, you know, something that's talked about in Community and Economic Development. But, you know, I think it's probably about time, in that area as well as other parts of the city, that we start looking at safer ways for pedestrians to get across the roads.
Thank you. Alderman Gillen.
If I could add to the amendment that we sent also to the Planning Commission, because they are also working on the master plan and transportation's part of that plan, so I think that would be also appropriate to send.
You can do a second referral if you prefer. You can do a second motion if you prefer.
Okay, fine.
Anyone else? If not, the motion on the floor is to refer to Community and Economic Development. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
I would like to also send it to the Planning Commission for their review.
Second. Any debate on the referral to the Planning Commission? Aldrin Ryan something? No? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Anyone else? Thank you very much. So if you could, Matt, if you could get the contact information so when a meeting is scheduled, we can be in touch with somebody. Okay.
I want you to send around.
Is there anyone else outside the rail to speak to the board on matters not on the agenda?
Yes.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. My name is Tabitha Moore. I live at 97 School Street in Wallingford. Back up. Are you good? Can you hear me?
Well, it's more for the TV.
Okay.
Right.
All right. I just want to make sure Norm can hear me, or I'm going to hear it later. So, hi, my name is Tabitha Moore. I'm president of the Rutland Area Branch of the NAACP. I grew up here and I came back to raise my family, some of whom are here with me, over 10 years ago. I think it's safe to say that we're all here tonight because we believe that Rutland is a place worth living. We are here because we love being here, and I suspect we've all entered leadership roles because we're here and we hope to improve upon and reiterate successes from the past to make our community a better place. It's no secret that our population is dwindling, that businesses are having trouble finding people to work, that people are struggling with poverty, or that drug abuse is destroying people and families and threatens to erode our community. The Rutland Area Branch of the NAACP is committed to making our community a good place, a better place, for all people. I believe that this too is a shared goal, or at least I hope that it is. We're here tonight, there are quite a few of us here, because we believe that this is our community, and we know that if we are to achieve the progress on a community level, we must work together. We must utilize our skills and resources together, emphasize the things we do well, and work to change the parts of our community that could use some improvement. That's basically how a community remains intact and flourishes. You gather regularly to figure out what to do about issues, and the issues that need work. You pull in experts and affected parties, figure out next steps, and track your progress. That's a simplified version of everything that you all do on the daily, but we know that it takes a lot more than that. I think, given all that I've seen and heard around town and on social media about the issue of addressing implicit bias, it's important that we remember these roots before we step forward. And when we step forward, my hope is that we do so together. Paul Polman said, "Working together to solve something requires a high level of humility and a high level of self-awareness." If we are all committed to making Rutland a more welcoming place, a place people want to live and to spend their time and their money, to devote themselves and their resources to, we will have to work together. But as Polman noted, this work requires that we know ourselves and that we are humble in our approach to working together. We come to you tonight to let you know that we are here and that we care about how you lead our community. We care about what you think and what you have learned along your journey, and what you've learned and to be true about the world impacts what you do and the decisions you make on our behalf. We are here to let you know a few things. Number one, the foundation of a healthy community is trust. If people do not trust their leadership, they will not follow that leadership. And Mayor LaRere.
Hi. I didn't get to say howdy yet. How you doing?
I believe that this concept was part of your platform when you ran, and that was a good one. I really liked that. And the other one was transparency, which I'll get to in a moment, but trust is built through mutual understanding that comes from self-awareness. Implicit bias training is a buzz phrase that basically means that you are thinking about how the factors that you are both aware of and unaware of shape your thinking, feeling, and decision-making. You make a plan to minimize and mitigate those factors, and then you make this plan public, so everyone knows who you are and where you stand and what you stand for. This also grows trust while exemplifying transparency. The second thing, we expect transparency as a community. This is the second of your pillars, Mayor, and I couldn't agree with you more. I'm glad that this topic is being discussed. I've heard that it's been discussed here among the board, and I'm grateful to the board for your consideration, and I'm particularly grateful to those members among you who have been persistent to fight to keep this discussion alive. And I will say this about what I've heard: no one wants to work for free. We just went over that when we talked about poverty, right? No one can afford to work for free. But please keep that in mind, that it's insulting to suggest that this is the only way you will engage in implicit bias work, and it's also unethical to expect people to work for free, especially on a topic that covers inequity in pay based on characteristics that have nothing to do with productivity or skill. So we expect transparency because that is what we were promised when you took office, Mayor. We expect transparency because we know that as a board, you're not really sure about this process. It's not actually just a one-shot deal where you take a training and you've arrived and you're actualized. If so, I would be a whole lot wealthier than I am now. And how could you possibly know all that it entails with everything that you have to carry as a board to bring this city forward? This work is very new to you, to many of you, and self-exploration on this level is tough territory to go alone as it is. We expect transparency because what you do impacts us all, and we all have resources to help you, which brings me to my next point. Number three, we are in this together. I don't think anyone brought a torch or a pitchfork tonight, right? You better not, if that'll really mess up my speech. But it seems anytime I mention that the NAACP is going to show up somewhere, this is what people assume is going to happen. I don't think it's happened yet, but the image persists. Perhaps it's because the work of the NAACP is painful work. The work of honest self-exploration is painful work. It's painful to think that regardless of our best intentions and our education and all of our knowledge, that we still do things to oppress other people. We all do, myself included, and I frequently tell the story about how, when we first started this branch of the NAACP and we decided that we were going to hold a vigil to acknowledge the atrocities that were happening in Charlottesville, I was out and about and I was doing my thing and I was excited. I was telling everybody, "Come out with us, stand up, you know, stand up against hate, stand up, you know, for people who are marginalized, stand up for people who can't speak for themselves." And somebody tapped me on the shoulder and said, "What about those of us that can't stand?" I realized in that moment, in my excitement and angst and my motivation, that I had linguistically shut out an entire group of people. I had done exactly what I was railing against. I had isolated and ignored people with disabilities who cannot stand, but sure as heck believed the same exact things that I do. I could have easily rejected that person's claims by saying, "It's just a phrase, I'm just trying to get people excited, why you got to be so sensitive?" But I realized that I was, intentionally or not, perpetuating oppression against people with disabilities. This had sparked a lot of conversation and discussion amongst the executive committee of the NAACP since that point. We are constantly talking about how do we do better to include and raise up the voices of those who face discrimination related to ability status, and I continue to work on myself and to be vigilant about how my language, intentional or not, and the events that we host, the places we meet, and everything we do promotes or inhibits full participation from those in our community who wish to be part of what we do, because what we do, we are so much richer when we are inclusive. I'm happy to say that I'm still alive despite this revelation and how painful it was. Did it hurt? Yes, it hurt a little bit, but this is what I do. This is my daily life. So I was a bit prepared to know that I was going to mess it up somewhere along the way, and that's what this is about. It's about just becoming aware that you're going to mess up, and just being aware of how that's going to impact your work. And that's what we want for you. That's why we're here tonight, so that when somebody says to you, "Hey, this harm, this, what you just did, is harmful or impacts an entire population in a negative way," that you can take that, you can hear it, you can absorb it, and understand the impact for you and the people involved, even if it is not your lived personal experience or a belief or anything you are familiar with, that you can hear that with empathy, and then do something meaningful to make amends and move forward in a better way. We're here because we know how difficult this work is, and we've been doing it a long time. We're committed to helping you through it too, because our viability and growth as a community depends on whether or not you really understand this, because you are the ones who make the decisions that shape our community. We want this to be a supportive process for you, and we're here with tools and resources. That being said, our commitment clearly extends beyond those who sit before us tonight, and we will do this work regardless of who sits in your seats. We want to work with you, which is why I've reached out several times, and this brings me to my final point, number four: we will not be ignored. Mayor, I met with you in 2017 and invited you to join the Rutland Area Branch NAACP meetings. It was a lovely meeting that gave me hope. Two years later, we spoke this summer at the Attorney General's Forum for a Hate Free Vermont, and you informed me that you hadn't attended because you didn't receive a formal invitation, even though the Vermont State Police, Rutland City Police, and many legislators at the state and local levels have come to our open meetings. I gave you your formal invitation that night. I have emailed you several times to offer support to you, and you have either rebuffed or ignored me each time. I've reached out to other board members in your group here, who had questions or troubles related to implicit bias as well, only to be rebuffed by those who needed it most. I get that this is hard, and I get that it may not be what you want to personally do, but rest assured, our community cannot grow without trust. We cannot grow without accepting and embracing the diversity that exists and welcoming that which would make us stronger. The people with me tonight and many more that could not be here with us know this. They expect this, and we will not be ignored. We will continue this work and we will continue to show up and ask how you're progressing because our lives and our livelihood depend on whether or not you get it. We're committed, we're here to help, and we hope that you lean on the people in your community, including us, as we are here to help support your inclusive leadership.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions of Ms. Moore? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, one more and then we're moving on to a different subject. Do we have anyone else outside the rail? Yes ma'am, your name and address for the record, please.
Yes. Heather Juliuson Stevenson, I live on Lincoln Avenue. I'm very thankful for these women coming tonight and speaking about such an important issue, the state-of-stay program. However, I was surprised by the response of the board, because I came here three months ago, and I told you, you were throwing away money by losing court cases because of racism that was being committed by people in this city, let alone the state. I came here and I told you, you were throwing away money because you were sacrificing people coming here and living here because you were not taking the steps that you need to take to be more inclusive, and you did everything you could to put it under the rug and not even have a conversation about it. But here, tonight, I watched all of you fall over yourselves to address this issue, which I hope you do address, but quite frankly, you're cowards. Thank you.
Nice seeing you. Thank you. Anyone else outside the rail to address the board on matters not on the agenda? We are moved... Yes ma'am?
I wasn't clear on what your statement was if you were taking more comments, but I am in support of the bias training.
Okay. Your name and address, please.
20 High Street, I own a property. I do live in Chittenden however.
That's fine.
So I think I'm a taxpayer, I guess that gives me some reason. But just philosophically, at this point in time in the country and in our city, when we're inviting people in and we have some controversy about immigration in general, I think it behooves us all to realize that we have bias. We live with bias. We were raised with bias. We learn from our assumptions, and they sometimes get so entrenched inside of us that they are invisible to us, so training is really a way of becoming more evolved as a human being and being prepared to open up to new possibilities in ways maybe we aren't prepared to without that training. And I was raised in New England in a town that's very white, and I moved to Rutland. It's a city that's very white, and I think, you know, we have a lot to learn and we have a lot of growth we can make, but we might need a little help along the way, and I think the bias training is an invitation for that growth. So I support the city in doing that.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. We are on to communications from the mayor. Mayor LaRere, we have a budget... Oh, I'm sorry.
My name is Jenny Gartner. Here she goes again. I reside at 260 Church Street. I was speaking with some of my students today in class, and I told them about the meeting that was happening, and I asked them what I should say, if I should say anything, and they said, "You should give a historical perspective on this because you're a history teacher." And I thought, "You're right, but I'm not the best by any stretch of the imagination." And so I looked to one of my favorite historians and professors who, his name is Ibram Kendi. He's a professor of American history at George Wash... Excuse me, at American University. And he wrote this piece in January of 2018, and I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I do want to make clear that these are not my words, however they are an excellent highlight, I think, for what we're talking about. "When our reality is too ugly, we deny reality. It is too painful to look at. Reality is too hard to accept. Denial is how America defends itself as superior to asshole countries in Africa and elsewhere, as President Trump reportedly described them in a White House meeting in December of 2017, although he has since, well, denied that. It's also how America defends itself as superior to developing countries in Africa, to quote how liberal opponents of Mr. Trump might often describe them. Mr. Trump appears to be unifying America in its denial. The more racist Mr. Trump sounds, the more Trump's country denies his racism, and the more his opponents look away from their own racism. To brand Trump country as racist, through it all, America remains unified as a country of denial. The reckoning of Mr. Trump's racism must become the reckoning of American racism, because the American creed of denial, 'I am not a racist,' knows no political parties, no ideologies, no colors, and no regions. Senator Richard Durbin, Democrat of Illinois, affirmed that the president did use the term asshole during a White House meeting on immigration with lawmakers. He rightfully described Mr. Trump's words as hateful, vile, and racist, and added, 'I cannot believe that in the history of the White House, in that Oval Office, any president has ever spoken the words that I personally heard our president speak yesterday.' But Mr. Trump is no exception. In framing Mr. Trump's racism as exceptional, in seeking to highlight the depth of the president's cruelty, Mr. Durbin showed the depth of denial of American racism. Begin with the eight presidents who held slaves while in the Oval Office. Then consider how Abraham Lincoln urged black people to leave the United States. Quote, 'Even when you cease to be slaves, you are yet far removed from being placed on an equality with the white race,' President Lincoln told five black guests at the White House in 1862. So it is, quote, 'better for us both, therefore, to be separated.'" Raging then, as we are raging now, the abolitionist William Lloyd Garrison responded, 'Can anything be more puerile, absurd, illogical, impertinent, untimely?' He added that, 'Had it not been for the stupidity of their white enslavers, not one of their race would now be found upon this continent.' This denial of racism is the heartbeat of racism. Where there is suffering from racist policies, there are denials that those policies are racist. The beat of denial sounds the same across time and space. Thomas Jefferson was not a founding father of equality. He was slave owner, and a founding father of the heartbeat of denial that lives both through Mr. Trump's denials and the assertion that his racial views are abnormal for America and its presidents. Fifty years ago, Richard Nixon transformed this historic heartbeat of denial into intoxicating political philosophy. His presidential candidacy appealed to George Wallace-type segregationists, who also, excuse me, attracting Americans who refused to live near dangerous black residents, obstructed the desegregation of schools, resisted affirmative action policies, framed black mothers on welfare as undeserving, called the black family pathological and denigrated black culture. All those racists who refused to believe that they were racists in 1968. A new vocabulary emerged allowing users to evade admissions of racism. It still holds fast after all these years. The vocabulary list includes law and order, war on drugs, model minority, reverse discrimination, race neutral, welfare queen, handout, tough on crime, personal responsibility, black-on-black crime, achievement gap, no excuses, race card, colorblind, post-racial, illegal immigrant, Obamacare, war on cops, Blue Lives Matter, All Lives Matter, entitlements, voter fraud, economic anxiety. The denials using these phrases come from both conservatives and white liberals who think people of color are stuck in cycles of unstable families and criminal cultures, and that the depravations of poverty and discrimination spin out bad people. Mr. Trump opened his candidacy with racism, calling Mexican criminals rapists. Since taking office, he has looked away from the disaster zone in Puerto Rico, he has called some violent white supremacists, quote, "very fine people," and he has described Nigerians as living in huts. When someone identifies the obvious, Mr. Trump resounds the beat of denial as he did before he was president. "I'm the, quote, least racist person you've ever met, that, quote, you've ever seen..." "I'm the, quote, least racist person you've ever met, that, quote, you've ever seen, that you've ever encountered." These are ugly denials, but it's the denials from those who stand in strong opposition to this president that are more frustrating to me. Denials that are attacks on identity politics are racist. Denials that the paltry number of people of color in elite spaces marks racism. Those denials echo the same ones that frustrated Dr. King in 1963 as he sat in a Birmingham jail cell and wrote, quote, "Shallow understanding from people of goodwill is more frustrating than absolute misunderstanding from people of ill will." Because we naturally want to look away from our ugliness, we paint over racist reality to make a beautiful delusion of self and of society. We defend this beautiful self and society from our racist reality with the weapons of denial. Denial is fueled by the stigma associated with being a racist. Feeding the stigma is how racist is considered almost like an identity or a brand. But a racist is not who a person is. A racist is what a person is, what a person is saying, and what a person is doing. Racism is not a fixed category like not racist, which is steeped denial. Only racists say they are not racists. Only the racist lives by the heartbeat of denial. The anti-racist lives by the opposite heartbeat, one that rarely and irregularly sounds in America, the heartbeat of confession. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, we're on to communications from the mayor, Mayor Lair, the 2021 municipal budget.
Sure. Yes? Thank you. Just gathering my thoughts here. I didn't intend to speak tonight, but I feel strongly about this now. I want to thank Ms. Stevenson for speaking up. You're absolutely right. I support and agree with everything that Tabitha just spoke to us about. And now I'm questioning myself, why did I not vocally show my agreement for what she said, but I so easily did for the group that came before her? Our silence speaks volumes and sometimes by not choosing, we're clearly making our choice. So I want to make it very clear that I support and am so grateful for the actions of NAACP in our community and I support implicit bias training at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Lair?
Just briefly, please. Your name and address for the record, please? I'm Ms. Zimmer, I live at 81 Temple Street in Rutland. You all received an email from me. I was not expecting a response from two, Melinda Humphrey and Lisa Ryan, because I've had extensive conversations with them and they've been very public about their stance and the questions I had. I did receive a response from two of you. That was Matt and Chris. And I thank you for your responses because that's what I was looking for, a feed conversation. And the reason why I emailed you all, because these were questions I ask myself all the time. I wanted you all to reflect on this. This is a journey that I started taking a few years ago, trying to understand how I play a part in this whole system, how my implicit bias causes harm, and what do I need to do about it? And it's a very painful journey when you realize it and you see it in yourself and you accept it. And it's embarrassing and it's humiliating, but you have to do it. We have to understand that we do have some blinders on just because we are white and we were raised in a society that puts those blinders on, no matter how progressive our parents might have been, no matter how wonderful of a job they did, it's just these messages we get bombarded with as white people make us create these biases in us that we don't see until you do the hard work to look inside. And that's what I was asking you to do and that's why I sent that. And I know it was painful and I know it was shameful and I know you did not like reading that from me. It's hard work. I've done it and that's why I'm here. I'm here to offer you support that I have been through this journey, I will walk with you in this journey. It's a journey that I'm continually going through and will never stop going through. And I want to support you all in this. I think it can only make us a better community when we look inside ourselves to see that. And it's painful and it sucks and it hurts, but you have to recognize you do have racist biases. We all do. There's no way of getting around that. So thank you for listening.
Mayor Lair?
Sure. So, good evening, everyone. I have handed out hard copies of the proposed fiscal '21 Rutland City Municipal Budget Proposal and I am certainly pleased to present that to you tonight. A lot of hard work, cooperation and collaboration has gone into this effort. As you have read in the newspaper on Saturday, I can go over a couple of the highlights for you, for those of you who did not at home, who didn't get a copy of the paper. The overall budget is up 2.9%. Included in this proposal is a 9% increase in Blue Cross Blue Shield rates, 8.4% increase in workers' comp rates. Our experience rating has increased since last year. I've included a 1.5% quota for non-union personnel. There is no new positions in the budget. Over at our police department, we have funded 39 sworn officers. That's down one from this last year. As you recall, over the last several years, discussions have happened at the budget meetings and throughout the year that we've been unable to recruit anywhere above 37. And I was finding it a very difficult time to justify coming in at 40 again when historically has not been our experience that we're going to be able to get above 37. I have told the chief and others that if, in the near future, in the upcoming budget years where we are going to be able to get closer to the 40 or at 40, then I certainly will support replacing or providing that number back in the budget. And if that were to come sooner, I would come to the Board of Alden and ask for some alternative funding to at least get us through to the next budget year. But we will cross that bridge when we come to it. Pension contributions are again, once again, fully funded with the accelerator in there as recommended by the actuary. Those are really the highlights of the budget. I do look forward, as I always do, for the next six or seven weeks to go through the budget with all the committees. I would just like to ask the committee chairman if, when you are scheduling your budget meetings, if you can give me a little bit of a heads up so that I make sure that my schedule is clear. Mondays and Tuesdays seem to work out better, but if you are going to schedule one of your budget meetings on Wednesday or Thursday, if you could just let me know ahead of time and I'll make sure that I am there. One other thing, as far as the water and sewer rates go, the rate study is about 95% done. It will be ready to go when the Public Works Committee schedules their meeting, but it is now looking as though we are not going to have any increase of water and sewer rates for the upcoming year. So they will be flat for the year. So I think that's all I have as far as the budget goes tonight.
I believe Alderman DePoy has a question.
I do. Mr. Mayor, we've had this discussion a ton of times. We had it leading into this budget season. I had it with the chief last year as far as the number of sworn officers.
Yep.
If that number were to be reduced from the 39 to the 37 during this budget process and they somehow got to the 40, is there a place in the budget where you can fund reaching 40 at that point?
No, there's not. That's off the top of my head, probably a couple hundred thousand dollars. There's no placeholder in the budget for that. I have a contingency fund, which if where, what I was thinking was if we were going to go from 39 to 40, if he was able to find, you know, recruit that one extra, one extra member of the department, then we could have a discussion with the Board of Alden, that's for sure, about whether that would be appropriate or not. Anything outside of that would have to be a discussion. There's only so many places to go and I think the signed fund balance is probably the only other place to go. And I wouldn't recommend that at this point, certainly not for that high a number because we did that once before and it became a problem in the following budget year.
Okay, so, and that leads me to my next question, which won't take place until July, but being that there's only been 37 full-time sworn officers and they were funded at 40, do you anticipate those three positions that have not been filled, the full amount of those positions to go back to the taxpayers when we set the rates in July?
So, do I anticipate funding the 40 in July?
Well, no, in July, are we going to see the full amount of those three funded that were never filled? So in other words, close to $300,000.
So right now?
I'm going to come back to the taxpayer when we go to set the rates.
So...
Or does that money get switched somewhere within the department and used for other purposes?
Well, I'm not sure I'm totally understanding your question. I think that that's a discussion that we can have at a public safety budget meeting.
David, if I may?
I think what there's, right, I think what he's saying was the existing budget this year was not funded to 40. It was funded to 40, not filled.
Correct.
So is there return revenue because of the lack of filling?
That might hold out, that's fair. So the answer is yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm all set.
Anyone else? So just a reminder to contact the city clerk when you're ready to schedule your appropriate department meetings. Alderman, Torey?
Move to send the budget to the appropriate committees?
Okay.
Any debate on the motion to refer the budget to the appropriate committees? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Anything else, Mayor Lair?
That's it for tonight.
Okay. So we're on to additions and deletions to the agenda. We have an opioid update from the city attorney to be held in executive session, if you could move that.
So moved.
Second.
Any debate on the motion to add, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We are on to reports and letters from department.
Chair, one other item for unfinished business.
Yes.
For to add to the agenda, I'm sorry. Move to add implicit bias training to unfinished business.
Okay, and we need to add implicit bias training to unfinished business.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion to move, add to the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
No.
All right, just a second, I need to catch up with you guys. Okay, so we are on to reports and letters from department heads and officials. RRA Director Brennan Duffy, downtown strategic plan update. Welcome Brennan, thank you.
Thank you very much, good evening, everyone. So a lot of what I'm going to speak about is actually in the memo that went out in the board packet, but for folks watching at home, I'd like just to talk a little bit about a process that we've been going through here over the past few months. About 10 years ago, we created a downtown strategic plan, which was really useful for the work of the Downtown Rutland Partnership and Redevelopment Authority in laying out plans and strategies to enhance the downtown and make good achievements there. And we were able to find some funding in the last year through some grants and through some funds that came out of the partnership and the RRA. And at this point, hired a consultant who is going to be working with us on this process over the next several months. The consultant hired is a firm called Camoin 310, based out of Saratoga, New York. They've done work in the Vermont area regionally and also nationally and we are expecting a good working relationship with them and a good outcome from the planning initiative that we're going to go into. As the next step of this, we're actually now ready to engage with the public and that's a big part of this, is we really do want to find some new ideas, get public engagement, have people talking about what they see as an important steps for the downtown. So we're going to be holding an open house meeting. It's going to be next Thursday, not this Sunday, Thursday, but next Thursday, November 14th. It's going to be held at the CCV building in the lower level in the conference room there. And the agenda for that, at 11:30 that will begin, at 12 o'clock noon, the Camoin folks will do a brief presentation talking about what their plan will be here over the next several months. And then again, until 6 o'clock, that area will be open and we'll have folks from Camoin there leading discussion. We'll have a number of stations where people can leave ideas and really the idea is just to get people talking and thinking about what we want to achieve through this process. We're also going to be doing some walking tours, starting at 12:45 and every hour after that, where we will have small groups that are interested in going out and taking a look at the streetscape conditions in different parts of the designated downtown, engaging in some ideas of what areas might need some work, what's looking good right now. So that will be a part of this process as well. So again, for folks here on the board, we'd love it if you're interested and you have a chance to stop by. There's no huge time commitment, it can be as long as a little time if you want to spend there, if you want to come at noon to hear a little bit more from Camoin directly about what their plans will be, that would be great as well. And we're looking forward to this process. I think our hope is that this should be wrapped up by March with some strategies to implement going forward from there.
Great.
Happy to answer any questions, if anybody has any.
Alderman, Torey?
Thanks. Yeah, it's just, I think, as Brennan said, it's a great opportunity to have your input in downtown. I think every, all of us, whenever we're talking to people in the community, they always have ideas for what should be downtown. Now here's your chance to actually be a part of that and write it down on a piece of paper. You know, if you're an entrepreneur, you want to do something, you want to help create that entrepreneurial ecosystem, you can come down and be a part of it. Works out. CCV, 60 West Street. And I won't even tell you that day.
Anyone else?
I did mention, I think there was a flyer that is going to go out, electronic thing and whatnot. I'd give us a couple copies if anybody has a business where you'd like to post this, just to keep people reminded that this is going on. I'm happy to hand those out.
Great. Great. I'll take one as well.
We'll put a couple up in City Hall.
So this is for information only and do your best to get there. Thank you. Anything else?
That's it for me, thank you very much.
So we are on to Treasury Markowski, request for RFP audit. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. I sent a short memo for this. The city policy is to go out for bid. We had a three-year contract for audit services that 2019 is the final year with Sullivan Powers, so I need the board's approval to go out and bid the city audit.
Alderman, Mattis?
Do I need to move to suspend the rules?
Second.
All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Alderman, Mattis?
I move the board approve that the treasurer obtain an RFP for audit.
Second.
Any debate on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Treasury Markowski, request for signatures on loan document. Those are pages four through 18.
Okay, and I gave that document to Tracy for signature, so this is the South End Water Main project and this is really a consolidation of several pieces that you have approved along the way for this project. So the total loan amount is $2,050,000 and that is a consolidation. I believe the project is almost finalized, so we'll see a final repayment schedule. And if you, I did want to point out, when you're looking through and signing the document, if you looked, there is actually a principal forgiveness of over a million dollars on this bond. So while you're signing for $2 million, the repayment is going to be closer to a million, so just wanted to make that.
Thank you.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Those opposed, motion carries. And we need to circulate for a second.
And motion to circulate for signature.
Second.
Any debate on the motion to circulate? Alderman Gill?
I have a question. You might not have the answer to this. Is the project next to the furniture store on Ripley Road included in that? When we approved that, is that included in the South End project?
I'm not sure, Bill. I'm sorry about that. I hate to say yes for anyone.
Is it?
The one we're doing now?
The one we're doing now.
Just read, there's some that are just the treasurer, some that are the chair, and some that are all of us.
We need to still vote, I think.
Pardon?
You haven't called the question yet.
Yeah.
So all those in favor of circulating for signature, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, yeah, so we'll get those around. Reports of standing committee, Alderman Woodcomb, public safety.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the Public Safety Committee met on October 23. I chaired. Committee members present were Alderman Tomala and Humphrey. Others present were President Davis, Treasurer Markowski, Alderman Clifford and Natori. Firefighters present were Kenyon, Robillard, Shattuck, Roy, Goodrich, Marku, and Sales Representative Daniel Olzansky. And I apologize if I mispronounced anyone's name. So the meeting can meet at 5:30 PM. Chief Larson provided an update that the Fire Department apparatus committee has worked to develop the specifications for a new fire engine, and that work is now complete. Chief Larson provided the committee with a copy of the new engine specifications for review. Chief Larson explained that he would like to sell Engine 2 and use the proceeds to purchase a newly designed engine. Chief Larson discussed that there is currently interest from multiple fire departments to purchase Engine 2. Departments that are interested are also interested in surplus fire equipment within the city department. Chief Larson explained that the saleable equipment the fire department has is functional but not feasible for use by our fire department and is currently out of service. Chief Larson also indicated that the departments that are interested would like to buy our engine and equipment for immediate deployment. Alderman Clifford asked the rationale for selling Fire Engine Number 2. Chief Larson outlined that the design of Engine 2 is not optimal for use in Rutland. The design is too large for Rutland city's needs, which has resulted in multiple accidents and inefficiencies when used to fight fires. President Davis inquired if the proposed transaction will be at a net zero cost. Chief Larson assured the committee that the cost would be at net zero. Alderman Tomala asked if there was preference between selling online or using a broker. Chief stated that both would work, but online would be preferable as the likely could find an interested party with cash on hand, maximizing the amount the department could obtain on the sale of Engine Number 2. Alderman Torey questioned how we could make sure that we not incur a cost. It was discussed that purchases must be authorized by the board prior to proceeding. It was also highlighted that newly designed truck already has a locked-in price, meaning that Engine 2 would not be sold unless the amount is equal to or greater than the cost of the newly designed truck. Chief Larson discussed that the tower ladder to be complete in January, and if there's a gap between sale of tower ladder and the tower ladder arriving at the department, there is an option to obtain a loaner fire engine for which we would only owe insurance. Mutual aid could also be accessed if need in the interim. A motion was made by Alderman Tomala, moving to authorize the fire department to list for sale Engine 2 in order to purchase a replacement truck as detailed in the provided sketch for a price not to exceed the net revenue from the sale of Engine 2. The motion passed 3-0, and I so move.
Second.
Any debate on the motion coming out of public safety? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Alderman Woodcomb?
There was also a motion moved by Alderman Tomala to refer fire alarm permit fees and false alarm fire fees to the Public Safety Committee. The motion passed 3-0, and I so move.
Second.
Any debate on the motion to refer? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Any other standing committees? Select committees? Representatives? We have no petition letters and miscellaneous communications. We need a motion to go into the Board of Control Commissioners.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We have a third-class liquor license Rutland restaurant. We just need to authorize the clerk to sign.
So moved. Second.
Any debate on the motion to authorize the clerk to sign? Alderman Reveal?
I abstain.
We don't know his abstention. Okay. He is a liquor, has a liquor license, so he is abstaining. We need, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Does the motion go out?
Yeah, motion to go out. Second. We have a second to go out?
Oh, second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We are under unfinished business. Alderman Woodcomb?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to make a motion to request that the mayor release an amount not to exceed $2,500 from the contingency fund to pay for implicit bias training.
Second.
Okay. Is there any motion? Any discussion on the floor, which is to authorize the mayor to expend an amount not to exceed $2,500 from...
From the contingency.
Contingency fund for implicit bias training. Alderman Humphrey?
If there's no discussion, I would like to request a roll call vote, please.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none. A roll call vote has been requested, so would the clerk call the rule? So just need to...
Pass that thing around?
Nope. Just need to keep track on in your minutes. So we usually start with Matt and go around.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Point of order. Can we, we can authorize from contingency fund, even though it's the mayor's fund?
The mayor has agreed. He just asked for a motion from the board. So the answer would be no, yes.
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 No.
No.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. Any other unfinished business? Seeing none. Miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business to come before the board? All right, we have an executive session. Do we have a motion from the city attorney in regards to the opioid issue?
Motion to find that premature general public knowledge regarding probable litigation to which the city would be a party would clearly place the city at substantial disadvantage because the discussion will divulge the city's strategy in such probable litigation and will include confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the city.
So moved.
Second.
Any debate on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Motion to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the city attorney to discuss probable litigation as allowed under Title I, Section 313a1e, and Title I, Section 313a1f.
So moved. Second.
Any debate on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We'll stand down until we clear the room.